Welcome to our February 28th meeting of Environmental Concerns and Real Property Tax Services. Welcome. Can I first get a motion to approve the minutes of our previous committee meeting? Looking out there, I see Supervisor McGowan with-
I can't. I wasn't here at the meeting, so I really can't. I'm gonna have to abstain.
Okay. Supervisor Dickinson, can we get a motion, please?
I get on me. Well, there we go. I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much. Can I get a second, please? Supervisor Brammer?
Second.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. The, our first order of business is to authorize a correction to the-
Mr. Chairman, a point of order.
Go ahead, yes.
I just, are we gonna vote on that? I'd like to abstain since I wasn't a voting member of your committee in the minutes.
Can we get a motion to, can we all vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Approved.
Um, excuse me, I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Our first order of business then is to authorize a correction to the 2022 Town of Chester tax roll. And the rationale is due to a clerical error per real property tax law, section 550 subdivision 2D. Can I get a motion to authorize a correction for the 2022 Town of Chester tax law? For discussion Supervisor McGowan, can I get a second, please?
Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate that. Lexi, can we get some-
Sure.
Discussion.
So this is a piece of property in the Town of Chester that had an exemption removal added to the 2021 assessment roll, which is used for the 2022 taxes. And typically when we do those, we go by the date on the deed. The deed is the legal document. However, Mr. McKenna has proven to us that the deed was dated in December, but they never had a closing until March. And that was when they acquired the property. They never exchanged any funds until that time. So we did go through and we did correct the tax bill to be able to correct the exemption removal to $5,308.51 with the total tax bill now being $7,885.76.
Supervisor Seber, do you have a question?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the ability to be able to zoom in. I know the governor is still allowing that for a few more weeks. But I have no information on this. The agenda that's posted online does not have anything under action request. Just three discussion items. I emailed you a short time ago to ask you for some backup info on those three items. So I'm certainly not prepared to vote on this, but in the future, could I please get updated online agendas? Or at least so the public would know and our members?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make every effort. Lexi, do you have any comment on that?
That would be my apologies. I had not all of the paperwork together when the agendas had to go through because we were waiting on a bid to come in and we got those. And then this was something that I was discussing with the county attorney as well as items under discussion for two and three. So number one under discussion was the bid results. And then number two and three were ones that I had been in discussion with our county attorney. He suggested that I add these to the agenda as well as this correction. So it is my apologies.
Lexi, there's no reason for you to apologize. I'm asking our chairman to communicate with us when there's changes. I assume as chair of this committee, he was aware of it. And as a member, I would just like to know what we're supposed to be voting on. So no apology needed from you. I'm just asking for a commitment from our chairman. Thank you.
Sure, we will. We'll make every effort. Supervisor Seber. Thank you. Supervisor McGowan.
Lexi, I know we kinda talked about this. I think you explained it to me, but I'm still- So is it an increase or is it a decrease?
It's a decrease. So their original tax bill, total tax bill, which included this exemption removal plus their county, town, special district tax, that totaled $9,655.63. Since we've done the correction to the tax, or the tax bill for the exemption removal adjustment, it's going to bring the total tax bill down to $7,885.76.
Okay, thank you. That's all. I appreciate it. Thank you, Lexi, for that.
You're welcome.
You're doing a great job there.
So we- Supervisor Leggett.
I just want to thank Director Delory and her office and County Attorney's Office for doing so much work on this. It was a complicated matter as sales can be sometimes. And we were able to work out a good resolution here. So thanks to everybody who was involved.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Leggett. Appreciate it. The, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? Yes.
I, I had a question and I guess I'll just vote no. Thank you.
So we, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
So we have two opposed. Thank, thank you very much. Lexi, the, moving on to the Johnsburg parcel. It is an asbestos and lead abatement issue. Would you be kind enough to update the committee on, on the issue at hand?
Sure. We had put a bid out for the cleanup of the property in the Town of Johnsburg at 3485 State Route 8, which is known as the old Mosher's Garage. We did get those bid results in and there is a bid tab sheet. A company called Ritter Imperator Contracting, Inc. was the low bid at $77,900. So I am asking, I do have a resolution request here attached to this. I don't have it up under action items because I thought we would discuss it first. There was three other bidders besides Ritter Imperator. Jupiter Environmental was the second lowest bid at $142,000. Cristo Demolition was the third at $160,000. And Mara Contracting Group was the fourth bidder at $172,200. I did do a bunch of reference checks on Ritter Imperator. Everybody had raving reviews on them. They all said that they were a great company to work for. Were very timely. Nobody really had anything negative to say about them. I have talked to Michael Ritter from Ritter Imperator. He has some concerns. The way he wants to do the demolition and abatement, so he's definitely gonna have to write a variance. Give that to us for review with ATL and then go from there. So I am asking today if there is a resolution request to award the bid and authorize an agreement with Ritter Imperator.
Can I get a motion then to award the bid to Ritter Imperator Contracting for being the low bidder for this proposal?
So move, Peter.
Thank you Supervisor Dickinson, seconded by Supervisor McGowan. Any discussion?
I have a question. It's Andrea.
Go ahead, Andrea.
Thank you. What's the variance that he wants?
I don't think he truly asked for a variance. I'm saying he's going to probably have to do one just with the way that he wants to demo it. He wants to pull the walls out, drop the roof in, and then remove the roof and the tiles. So there, there may be concerns with that process because when you drop the roof, it's hard to say where debris is going to go. We just want to make sure that the Department of Labor is gonna be good with that. So I would assume he's going to do a variance.
Okay, okay. But he's, he's gonna fully demolish?
Yes.
And remove?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Seber, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I don't understand why these things are being put on our agenda without anything as backup in the packet. I mean, this has been sitting for a long time, so I don't understand why we can't see the bid tab and understand better what the proposals are. And, you know, all due respect to the supervisor of Johnsburg, I think that it would be prudent of us to see all of the information before we pass this on to the full board for approval. I'm gonna vote no on this one, too. In fact, I'd like to table it.
I'll second the-
And that's a motion.
I'll second the motion to table.
For crying out loud.
Point of order. Mr. Chairman? I have a point of order.
We got a point of order here.
Yes, point of order. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I really believe that there is a decorum, according to Robert's rules, to, you have to speak when only recognized by the chair, supervisor from Lake George. Not only are his comments out of order, but the, the way that he is speaking in terms of not being called on is out of order, which would be a clear violation of Robert's rules. I would ask that you please address it.
Thank you. Lexi?
Excuse me. You have to rule on my point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Lexi, go ahead.
Again, a point of order. Mr. Chairman, we have a process that we passed under our standing rules. Just asking that you rule on my point of order. Either it's well taken or it's not well taken. I can ask the committee then to vote on it if they disagree with your decision. You have a parliamentarian next to you.
What would you suggest?
Okay, the, let's, let's vote on the- The, we have a suggestion that the members refrain from speaking until they have the floor and have been recognized by the chair. That, that being said, can we vote on the point of order? All those in favor?
No, there's no vote.
The, go ahead, then Lexi.
I don't know if it would help. I do have a packet here that has everything in it. If I could have it scanned in and emailed to you guys, I don't know if that would help or if it's too short of notice. But I could take it out and ask the girls to scan it and send it to you if you feel that that may help.
I think that would help, Lexi, and that would be very much appreciated. Thank you. Supervisor McGowan.
Yes, Lexi, that's, that's what you handed out here, the whole demo package. You know, I, I know we, this has been a pet peeve, another one of mine that I just like to go on the record saying once again, you know, property owners take it, trash it, and then decide not to pay on it and then hand it back over to the county to clean it up so we can hopefully put it back on the market. But it's been a process getting this far. I know Lexi has done an awesome job. And, you know, we went over and over this last year, so I will say that I will be voting for this so we can get this project cleaned up in Johnsburg because I'd like to see what kind of money this can bring back into the coffers. So, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the information being scanned out at this hour, but I will be abstaining from this, though. I would just ask that the public also has an opportunity to see these documents and that's why it's so important to have them online.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Is there-
There's a, there's a motion by Supervisor Brammer and seconded by Supervisor Seber to table the matter.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To table the motion. Opposed?
Aye.
You gotta do a roll call.
Yeah, you gotta do a roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Nick Devitt.
Uh, no.
Dickinson?
No.
Girasi?
Yes.
Brammer?
Yes.
Runyon? Seber?
This is to table, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
McGowan?
No.
The motion to table fails. Only two were in favor.
The motion to table fails. The two members were in favor.
Point of order. I thought the supervisor Girasi voted to table. That would be three, three, wasn't it?
Yes, I'm sorry. So it's, it's tied. It fails. It's three and three.
The most, the motion fails. That being, our last item on our agenda is the Queensbury parcel.
Can we go back to the Johnsburg?
Sure, go ahead. We're going back to the Johnsburg parcel.
I do have another resolution here for that same piece. And I wasn't sure if the committee would wanna do this or if we wanna wait and we can take this part up next month. But it would be to appropriate funds from the 893 Reserve Environmental Testing Fund to the 1355 470 Real Property Tax Services contracts budget code for the demolition and abatement, asbestos abatement services in the amount of $77,900.
So we have a motion to approve the abatement proposal in the amount of $77,900. Can I get a motion to, to put that on the floor, please?
So move, Peter.
Oh, Supervisor Dickinson?
Thank you.
Can I get a second, please Supervisor McGowan? Go ahead.
No, say that again.
The, the resolution would be to appropriate funds for the demolition and asbestos abatement services so that the money would get transferred out of the reserve testing fund to my actual contract budget code to be able to pay for these services once they're done.
So are we still under actions and agenda? So that's another one that wasn't put on?
Because I wanted to discuss the tab sheet before the resolution request, so it may be my fault. I may have done these in a wrong order.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not putting-
No, I know. I'm just saying.
You know, we just approved, you know, we just narrowly approved getting the project to come down. I'm just, you know, I don't wanna make a stick out of it, but I, you know, we, we have talked about this building for quite a long period of time and I know that we have, I have talked to our attorney of benching and getting some language that we need into a law that we could go back on previous property owners that have done this. Because I don't think it's fair that the Town of Queensbury is picking up, you know, almost thirty, you know, 33% of this project. Even though the money is in there as a reserve that comes from the sale, but it, it all comes from the taxpayers. The bottom line, it still comes from the taxpayers. But no, I'm, I'm all in favor of moving this and getting this project to move on.
Thank you very much Supervisor McGowan.
Mr. McDevitt, before you take action on that, you need to return to the motion that was made originally by Dickinson and McGowan for item one. The motion to table failed, so it has to be addressed.
So it's this item right there?
Yeah, so we have to vote, don't we have to vote back to the original?
Yes, you go back to the motion that you originally made.
So we're going, going back to that originally motion.
It's for the agreement with Ritter and Imperator.
Awarding the bid and authorizing-
Right, awarding the bid.
Awarding the bid to Ritter, the Ritter organization. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Do we have a roll call, please? I, I'm really unclear who's voting for what.
We have a roll call, please?
Sure. McDevitt?
Uh, yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Girasi?
Yes.
Brammer?
No.
Runyon? Seber?
Abstain.
McGowan?
Yes.
If motion passes. So the last item on our agenda today are, is, is number three. And it is a, a resolution actually. There's been a change to in fact, table number three, which is a parcel in Queensbury, on Queensbury Avenue. Can you give us just-
No, it's number two is the one that we're supposed to be on, the appropriation you're going to. Yeah, first you have to do that.
Yes.
You have to finish the Johnsburg one first.
Yep.
To appropriate the funds. We have a motion by Dickinson and a second by McGowan to appropriate the funds. So you need to vote on that for the abatement.
Chairman, I have a question.
Can we get a, can we, question, go ahead.
Yes, it's regarding the appropriation of funds. How much do we have in the Environmental Reserve Testing Fund right now? Please, Ms. Delory, if you don't mind, Chairman.
It is now over $200,000. We moved, the, the money was moved, I wanna say at the beginning of February from the treasurer's office from the 25% that came over from the auctions proceeding, proceeds. So that money is now being conveyed and it's over $200,000.
Do you have, excuse, do I, can I just ask one follow-up, Chairman?
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you. On the rest of the agenda, are we going to be appropriating additional funds for any of these other properties?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No, okay, thank you.
The, so there is one motion on the floor to appropriate the dollars to the Ritter organization. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
The motion carries. One last item is, is a motion to table number three, which is a-
We need to do number two first. The one that's numbered, number two is Queensbury Parcel 309.9-1-14.1. It's a parcel in Indiana Avenue in the Town of Queensbury. This is another one that I had discussion with Attorney Elman on. It's a sliver. This is one that I had actually brought to committee a long time ago, probably a couple of years ago. And the committee had told me to go ahead and try to convey this property back then to the neighboring owner, which is an Edward LaRoe. I had reached out to Mr. LaRoe two different times by letters and never received a response. I have reached out to him by phone and never received a response. So I decided to discuss it with Attorney Elman and we, he's included also was Robert Twilliger, our Assistant County Attorney. And Robert drafted a resolution on this if it is something that the committee is comfortable with. It's just a little sliver of land, 10 feet wide at the most, by about 100 feet long. It's a little tiny sliver of land that was subdivided a long time ago from the neighboring owner, emerged into what is now Mr. LaRoe's property. It wasn't at the time. Those people, however, lost the property to a foreclosure. The bank will only foreclose on what the mortgage is on. So this piece of property got split back out again. However, the garage sits on this little strip of land or the outside edge of the garage is on this little strip of land. So after my conversation with the County Attorney Elman and Assistant County Attorney Robert Twilliger, they feel that we should do a deed because of adverse possession to these, to Mr. LaRoe, who is the current owner where the garage sits. The property is of no value to the County of Warren. Like I said, it's just the outside wall of these people's garage. It is only .01 of an acre of land. And I'm not sure if we're going to even be able to get them to sign. I'm hoping that we can. I have gone and spoken to the county clerk's office about this because there is recording fees involved. There's county fees and there's state fees. And after discussing this with County Clerk Vogel, she said that, you know, if committee agrees, she could waive the county fees, which would be in the amount of $60. But then there is fees that would total $255 that would need to be paid to New York State. I don't believe I have an extra $255 in my budget to be able to pay to convey this property to these people. So if this is something that the committee wants to discuss, I don't know, I don't think I've ever taken money out of contingency, so I'm not sure the whole process. Maybe that could be done for the $260. But I really think that conveying this to Mr. LaRoe would be of the best interest of everybody involved. Then there is no liability to the county on that property and it would go into the ownership of him. In the deed, if we do convey this, we could make notation in the deed that the intention of that deed would be to convey this property into other lands currently owned by Edward LaRoe. Enlist his tax map parcel number in that deed as well. So at the time that the conveyance would happen, once it gets recorded in the county clerk's office, it would come to my office and my tax mapper would merge those properties together so they would become one piece of land.
Peter?
Yes, go ahead Supervisor.
We got Frank here. Frank, where would you suggest we get the money from?
I don't know, maybe you could take up a question down there. Probably contingent fund, I would say, I guess, if we're gonna do it.
Okay, thank you.
I would make a motion that we take the money from contingency, please.
We have a motion to take those funds out of contingency. Do we have a second on that, please?
I'll second it.
Supervisor Brammer, thank you very much on the second.
Excuse me, that is Supervisor Runyon.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble seeing the screen. I'm sorry Supervisor Brammer. Seconded by Supervisor Runyon. So we have a first and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Could I have a chance to ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. The only thing I see in the packet that was just emailed out to us a moment ago was about the, the piece of property. There isn't, I can't see anything about the need for funds. Can you just explain that one more time to me? It seemed to be missing what we're taking, what amount we're taking out of contingency and why.
Sure.
Go ahead, Lexi.
In order to do a conveyance, there's fees for recording the RP 5217 and the TP 584 because those are New York State forms. New York State gets paid. because those are New York State forms. New York State gets paid when you record those documents in the county clerk's office, along with a deed. The county clerk's office can waive the county fees if the county is, board is in agreement with waiving those fees of $60. So that part wouldn't have to be paid, but the fees to New York State would still have to be paid, and that would total $260 to cover...
Thank you, Lexi. I understand.
Thank you, Lexi.
Did we make a decision already as a committee to convey this piece of property, Chairman?
We have not yet, no.
Okay, I think that that should be taken up first before we make a motion for the contingency. And I'll just ask my question on this about, since I have the floor, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
I have no problem conveying this piece that we took in foreclosure to the neighboring landowner. But I do have concerns about our reasoning listed here in the agenda, that we are doing it because of settling an adverse possession claim. That seems really unnecessary. We have, in the past, given property back to property owners. When there's a little sliver like this, it's problematic, and the county doesn't want it, no one else wants it, doesn't make sense for it to go to anyone else. I don't think that we should be conceding that there's any adverse possession claim here against the county, and maybe the county attorney's office has already weighed in. But I haven't seen anything to that effect. Thank you.
Robert, could you weigh in possibly?
Definitely, I'd like to. I would recommend, because this does involve litigation or potential litigation in that, that we go into executive session to discuss it because of issues that could affect the county, please.
Okay, can we get a motion to go into executive session? Supervisor McGowan, seconded by... Are you having trouble? Do we have a second?
I was, I very much hesitant to have that, but I would like to hear the answer. So I'll second that this is Supervisor Kramer.
Thank you. So we are... Can we vote to go into executive session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So we want to post.